Ready to stand? All right, and turn and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask Dr. Title to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I've got to ask everybody remain standing for just a moment of silence on two counts. One, if you just keep in your thoughts the number of people that were injured and some of which are still in the hospital from last Friday night's train crash. And second, I realized my brother just got home today from Afghanistan for a two-week break, but with Memorial Day coming up, I'd ask that we keep in our thoughts all the men and women serving in our military around the world. Thank you. All right, first up on the agenda, this is a special meeting. So we have a limited agenda of just two items. First up, from the Director of Public Works to hear, "Consider and Adopt Upon the Following Resolution Recommended by the Director of Public Works, Resolved That Michael C. Tetra, First Selectman of the Town of Fairfield, Be and Hereby Is Authorized to Sign the Agreement Entitled 'Master Municipal Agreement for Construction Projects.' This item was postponed from our last meeting. May I have a motion to accept?"
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Hurley, you had started this. We had some questions last time. Can you take us through the answer to our questions from last time?
Well, the first main request was to have the town attorney take a look at the agreement and offer any opinion. He and I met on Friday, and we also had a discussion via the phone this morning. And he concurs that it's just a general agreement, typical of most grants or all the grants that we've had, and that for any future grants, there'll be a supplemental or detailed letter of authorization anyway involving these projects. So therefore, this item would only have to go to the Board of Selectmen. So those were two of the things that had come up. In the, let's see, in terms of the agreement, as I said before, it had the typical language in the interest. I mean, I can go over some of the highlights that we had gone over if you want, but I know we're really short on time, so.
Turn to my colleagues on board. Do we need those items covered again since they were covered in our last meeting?
No.
All right. In addition, Mr. Hurley, I think you got a list to the board about the towns on this. Deck it out to my colleagues on the board. You've seen this list?
Yeah.
All right, so we now, we have a list, and just to highlight, we've got three pages of listings of other towns in the state that have all executed this agreement in advance of our doing so.
That's correct.
All right. Kristin?
Thank you, Mr. Hurley, and Mr. Lesser as well. To clarify, this particular agreement, the master agreement, will only come before the Board of Selectmen, but those supplemental pieces would go, I'm assuming, through the typical process maybe?
That would be correct because it'll involve funding.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Since you said that, I wanted to make sure that we all understood that. Okay? Thank you.
Just one quick question to the town attorney, please. I know you've reviewed the document. If you could just give us a moment on that. And in addition to that, have any of the other towns you have signed on, have there been any amendments or changes made to the versions of the documents that they have signed?
I'm not aware of any changes, but I haven't checked, but my guess is no. This is, I don't know if you got the whole package. There's over 100 pages.
Yeah, yeah.
So instead of doing this for every single project-
Excuse me, if I might, we could just have one conversation at a time.
That comes before the state, you know, they have multiple projects, probably many per year. They don't have to send this whole package out. They get what's called a PAL, I think it's called, a Project Authorization Letter. That's the one that details all the specifics of each project. That's the one that you will be voting on, I think, when the time comes. And then they just probably refer back to this agreement for the boilerplate and all the conditions, you know, things like work rules and, you know, anti-discrimination policy. They don't put that now every time they send one out. It refers back to this.
So in short, you're good with the master services agreement as is?
I am, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Yes, good.
All right. Seeing none, any comments from the public on this? Seeing none, we're back to the board. Any further comments or follow-up? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
All aye.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hurley, thank you. Attorney Lesser, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Hurley, also for the opening of Cornell Rose Bridge.
Well, thank you.
Here, here.
One down.
All right. Next up, "To Hear, Consider, and Adopt the Bond Resolution Entitled 'A Resolution Appropriating $11,630,000 For the Costs Associated With the Expansion and Renovation of Fairfield Ludlow High School and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation,' a Copy of Which is Attached Here Too." This item was also postponed from our May 15 meeting. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, the item is now before us. Is there somebody from the Board of Ed or Central Office that would want to address the issue and some of the questions that were raised in our last meeting? Okay. Dr. Title, please feel free to bring your entire team up.
But I know I'm probably not the best one to address that, but I did see some schedules come out from your office, Bob Mayor's office, about the waterfall.
I think Mr. Mayor is on his way down here.
Okay.
With your permission, when he arrives-
You probably want to walk through these.
We can move to the-
He's here, so I don't know if you want to do that first?
Why don't we start with that first just to get that out of the way?
Right, because it looks good.
And again, just to-
Did I set you off? You said the red is red?
Yeah, the red is good. Well, it was better.
Just to frame the discussion from this point, Mr. Mayor, our chief fiscal officer is going to give us an overview of what we call our waterfall chart, which is our capital plan reduced to the spending by year, which impacts directly our debt service on an annual basis. So we have a chance of seeing this capital project laid into the plan and what that means to our debt service. And I believe this has been updated with our Riverfield project approval, which while it hasn't gone through the rest of the boards, has at least gone through this board. So this is our best available information at this point. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, normally when we talk about debt service and waterfall, we're used to seeing this eight-and-a-half-by-17 piece of paper with little tiny numbers on it. So today, instead, we have eight-and-a-half-by-11 with larger numbers. And there's basically three schedules. Tried to simplify it, though because there's three schedules, it's a little bit complex. The first schedule, Schedule Number One, titled up in the upper right-hand corner, shows the fiscally, the first column is the fiscal year ending. The second column is what the debt service stream would be should the town execute the capital projects that were included in the capital plan that was reviewed by the various bodies in February of this year. The third column is, I know we're only talking about Ludlow High School. I'm going to talk about Riverfield today. Let's be talking about Ludlow today, but later on, I'm going to give a little bit of Riverfield as well. The second column shows what the debt service stream would be should Ludlow High School be approved and construction executed under the current schedule. Now, when the Board of Ed submitted their revised capital plan with the changes to Ludlow High School, they also moved some other projects around. And then the fourth column is the difference then in the capital plan. Now, the reason that 12 is still there is so the total numbers, the totals of the various columns will tie to the February document that everybody saw. So as you can see, Ludlow High School by itself, if you, and the rescheduling of the other projects, the town would save $5,375,000 over the 10-year period in debt service. And because we'll be borrowing some monies later, and we, our assumptions assume interest rates increase over time, that $5 million is made up for in additional payments in the years 2024 through 2043 for a net total cost over the 30-year period of $1,368, which present value, that would be, you know, that would be a savings as well. So that is the total impact on Riverfield only, excuse me, on Ludlow High School only with respect to the capital plan that was reviewed and discussed in February.
Mr. Mayor, could you briefly explain to us, given we're adding a project, how do we reduce our costs in the long term?
The, in the handout, I didn't bring a copy of that with me, there was a page that indicated, and I don't have that with me because I came down here quickly.
Mr. Mayor, are you referring to the amendments?
Yes.
Yes, that was part of the packet last week.
Yeah, it's part of the packet that went out. Thank you. So in addition to consolidating Ludlow High School and doing it sooner, the Board of Ed delayed the Dwight Elementary School roof replacement, which is $1,002, which was scheduled for fiscal years 13, 14, and rescheduled that to years 2015 and 2016. And then also Dwight School renovations in the amount of $4,356,000, which are scheduled for years 2018, 19, have been rescheduled for years 2020, 2021. Then in addition, those are the two major additions. Also, they took from Ludlow High School the bathroom renovations of $1,125,000 was taken out and rescheduled from 13, 14 to 2021. So by moving those three items forward, plus some other minor tweaks, that resulted in the net decrease in debt service cash flow.
So in much in the short, in the next few years, it's a reduction in debt service, but it's really by doing that, by moving those projects out, we're basically able to get the reduction in the current year's debt service. It's not so much a change in the cost of those projects, just a change in the timing.
Change in the timing, extending the payments out over time if we're paying for them later. What's not factored in, but I based the numbers, the numbers are per Silver. That was another change. There was some minor differences, but not major. The amount per the original school board numbers was $1,467,000. When those replaced by the amount per the architect, it was increased by only $108,000. That's another minor tweak. What's not in here is change in estimate of costs of these projects. Projects have been moved forward, but they weren't adjusted for inflationary factors.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Just to follow up, so you went through Schedule One with us. There's Schedule Two and Three also, and I'm looking-
Yeah, I did Schedules Two and Three because I know that people are also talking about Riverfield. That's my, every once in a while, I say Riverfield, I mean Ludlow, Ludlow. I mean Riverfield. So Schedule Two is what the impact, Ludlow is approved at the current recommended amount or requested amount. The second schedule just shows what the difference would be if Riverfield is then approved by the various town bodies for the new $14,486,000 amount. And that, of course, shows an increase because that's the only change made, is the increase of that project from $13 million to the $14,486,000. And then the third schedule is the combination of Ludlow, Riverfield, and the Dwight changes compared to the February numbers.
So the comprehensive look is Schedule Three?
Correct. And it was pointed out to me today that the decreases are in red, and red is normally bad, but in this case, or Republican. But in this case, red is good.
Red's my favorite color, by the way.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board or questions on just the cash flow and just the waterfall in terms of the impact?
Comment, if I may have my sheet back as well, because I probably will use, comment, I-
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm glad that you pointed out the inflation piece because that was one of my questions. When I look at the Dwight project, for example, looking at 2021, 20, 2021, am I right? Yep, moved out. At 4.4 million, I'm skeptical that we'll be able to do that project for that cost at that point in time. So that's a number that I'm not as confident in, looking at that. I certainly, any number of things can change projections on any project as we've learned this year with PCBs. We always have surprises that occur, but I think just from an inflationary standpoint, as you noted. So that's just one comment I have about the movement.
Yeah, yes, and obviously, with 10 years down the road, all sorts of things can have an impact when we're that far out. Mr. Mayor, I did want to take a moment and just say, you know, one of the things we've struggled with over the last few years is how to include that, what we use, call a waterfall chart and kind of relate that back to projects. And I think you've done a lot of work in the past year in terms of pulling it together so we have a schedule that makes sense to us in terms of looking at projects and seeing what the change is. What you've laid out here is really what we've been trying to ask. Every time we look at a capital project, what is it doing to our plan? What's it doing to our projections? And this is the clearest sheet I've seen in terms of laying that out. So thank you very much for the work you've put in to kind of lay this out and help all the bodies understand the impact of what's taking place.
Yeah, and obviously, the Board of Ed and Finance Department. But thank you. And I'll pass your words on to the Finance Department.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at this point? My goal would be to let Mr. Mayor leave if we're done with the finance piece of this.
This is actually a question for Dr. Title or Chairman Dwyer, Vice Chairman Iacono of the Board of Education versus Central Office. So when Mr. Mayor presented the numbers, he talked about these amendments that came from the Board of Education. Is, are those amendments really amendments that he, that were worked on with Dr. Title and the Central Office? And I've asked this in a different form before. Or is that something that the entire board has agreed on? Or is there further conversation that the board will be having with respect to long-range facilities planning? I know many questions with that one.
So the easiest one is the last question. The answer is yes. The Board of Education has reviewed the updated capital plan in February. As a board, we recognize that it's a dynamic document, and therefore, as the various projects are further vetted out, we have on our schedule to have an official discussion and approval of an updated capital plan in the fall. We thought that there's too many moving parts at the moment, not only based on the development of the projects, but on the review process of the town bodies, and that we would be, a better use of our time would be to kind of sort it out in the fall after certain decisions are made. The Board of Ed and Dr. Title's office is committed to working with the town, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, the RTM, in keeping faith with the concept and the spirit of the waterfall chart. And so as adjustments have to be made in order to keep that waterfall chart meeting the goals that the town has, the board is ready to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn it back to Dr. Title. I need to just step out briefly. Kristin, I could turn the meeting over to you. I'll be right back.
You're welcome. Okay.
So we're like, we're like the hockey team operating within the salary cap. So we have capologists in the office who work on this to make sure we stay within the numbers so we don't get hit with a luxury tax like certain teams do. I thought it would be helpful-
We only need one more victory.
-Mr. Silver to explain, the questions that came up at the last meeting about the impact of the roof that blew off, we replaced, so that reduced the square footage required, but there were some other updated costs that we hadn't included, and so the net isn't a huge change. So I thought it'd be good of him to walk you through the differences. There is a small net savings there that you might want to capture.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Hello. Bill Silver with Silver Petrocelli and Associates, Architects and Engineers. I'm referring to that one-page, four-colored sheet that you have in front of you. Just quickly to highlight the changes, most of them are reflective of the questions or clarifications that you asked at our last meeting. Two of them, they're right in front of you, a package, at least. I thought they were. Yeah, that's right. We broke apart the cafeteria number into the addition versus the alteration cost or the renovation cost.
Do you want me to enter through, Mr. Silver, to give Selectmen Kylie a chance to catch up? It's right after this, in that package. And it's got this Tom Collins email on top of it.
I have it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Silver.
Go ahead. Sure, okay. Essentially, we broke it apart, the square footages, to identify addition versus renovation, as well as the separation of those two costs to derive those, essentially the same cafeteria number that you had seen before. We also reflected discovery of the PCBs, as you mentioned, the Selectmen, and the surprise of those costs that happened in March as we discovered more PCB penetration into the masonry. And those two additional cost items are reflected in that block of numbers in the middle of PCB abatement costs. We also reduced the cost by the 17,800 square feet of roof that was blown off and replaced. Right. And that $390,000 reduction is tempered by $95,000 of just estimated cost to protect that roof area as we meet and expand it into the other adjacent roof replacement areas. We also calculated the escalation, possible escalation, and it's only possible because escalation can remain stagnant as it has since 2008. And so we calculated that at the very bottom of the spreadsheet at $369,000, but it's not part of the total funding request because escalations are never predictable. And we actually recently bid a $69 million high school renovated as new, and we saw no escalation, and that was last week. So every time these numbers are evaluated, we always evaluate them based on the latest information, and it can be from week to week, much less month to month, or in this case, almost six months since this report was issued. More importantly, the right-hand column, you asked for the estimated ineligible costs. And so we identified those in the various working components of the project. For instance, doors, exterior doors especially, replacements are totally ineligible, while a portion of the windows are eligible or ineligible. And so we kind of break out those costs. Until those contingency dollars of $1,384,000 are spent, those are identified as ineligible by the school facilities unit. So you're getting almost a design development or a construction document type of analysis of how the Bureau of School Facilities will dissect your estimate for ineligible versus eligible. But as you spend contingencies, then it's converted either into ineligible or eligible dollars. So it is a moving target, and it is every week with the Bureau of School Facilities as it is with the construction estimating world or the construction bidding world. Other documents that were given to you as well were the furniture breakdowns, both in terms of the types of furniture that are expected for the various spaces, as well as Jan from the Fairfield Public Schools even dissected down to the $75 items, what some of them would be. And her total was about $305,000, which is in the neighborhood of the $360,000 that we had estimated. So in the ballpark. So that is more the bricks and mortar answers that we hope we met your needs or at least your few questions that you did have from us on that side. And I think that's the architectural highlights.
Do you want to pursue that further, or is that?
Any questions at this time?
Well, I'm still here.
Yeah, he's not going anywhere.
Is there a net-net to all of that that provides an adjustment to the request for today?
I don't think we-
Does that make sense?
It remained the same. And part of the reason it remained the same, it was virtually within $100,000 or so of the original number. And part of it is that the $360,000 of potential escalation costs are not in there. So it could be a net add of over $250,000 if you were pessimist and took all the escalation in through 2014, 15. So it is, it was so close, as we recalculate this every time we meet, that there was no net-net offered. But you're welcome to calculate out, compare the two spreadsheets, and calculate if you'd like.
Any other questions? We'll let Dr. Title go on. Okay?
Yeah, good.
Dr. Title?
So we did some background work on the question of Ward Early Childhood Center space. Got a couple handouts to share with you. So one is, what would the cost be should the board wish to redistrict students? And knowing that Ward is already at capacity, the only way that could work would be to recapture the space from the ECC. Otherwise, you're simply transferring the problem from one school to the other. That space was renovated in 2004, and we went to update that to what would that cost? What would be a reasonable estimate to change that space back over? In addition, what would it cost to relocate the ECC somewhere else? Because we're obligated to provide that service. So I have a handout on that. And we have extras.
Thank you.
These are much less detailed than Mr. Silver's work.
Thank you.
So let me just walk you through this briefly. Because we've made the claim before, the board had this discussion, that it was, the option we were proposing to you was the least expensive option. Because remember, only a portion of this $11 million is to the expansion of the Ludlow facility. A large portion of this is the windows and the roof. So our estimate is that to recapture the classroom space from the Early Childhood Center and re-convert it, in other words, undo everything that was done and turn it back into usable, regular classrooms for Ward High School, using a Bureau of School Facilities cost estimate for renovated space of $375 a square foot, gives us a rough number of $5 million. That's already more than we're proposing to spend on the Ludlow expansion alone. And that does not include hazardous material testing that would need to be done at an unknown cost. It also doesn't include the expansion of the cafeteria we would need to do at Ward to accommodate the additional students there, as we have the same problem with the cafeteria at Ward that we have at Ludlow. Then the question would be, how much would it cost? This particular model shows what would new construction cost to build an ECC somewhere else. You know, this can be debated. This is a $6 million number. If you had a space that could be renovated, you could use a $375 a square foot number. But the fact is that you're already over what we're asking in the $5 million. So whether the relocation of the ECC is $6 million or $5 million or $4 million, the general point is still there. The least expensive option before you is the project that we have. This does not include, what do we do, for example, with the playground that we just spent $100,000 on? That now it just sits there. It's just there. So that's one point, that the add-on to Ludlow is the least expensive option because the ECC would be incredibly expensive to replicate somewhere else.
Can you, just on that?
Yep.
Can you also adjust the timing of that? For instance, if both of these options were available-
For instance, if both of these options were available, which one could be done sooner with all things considered, like, you know, town approvals and current work schedules?
Yeah, right. I know, there's logistical issues, too.
Exactly.
Right. Which I haven't even, you know, this is sort of a theoretical model that shows just on its face, it's a much more costly proposition than the alternative proposed to you, the alternative that we have in front of you is able to be done much more quickly.
Dr. Ty, on the estimate dollar estimates per square foot, are those the same numbers that say the Riverfield Building Committee was using?
I don't know. Not sure what they used.
Where did these numbers come from?
From the Bureau of School Facilities.
Right, but we just had estimates for, these numbers are considerably higher than the Riverfield estimates, which is why I was asking the question.
Because they include all the soft costs in them. These do. As opposed to the, you know, these include the soft costs of 20% in that range, right? So you might have had a $305 renovation figure plus soft costs, 20% gets you to the number we're at.
Right. But we didn't go back and look at our most recent construction costs to see how these related or build off those.
Oh, they're in the ballpark.
We did look at a lot of things.
Yep. So you've got.
Did we compare these to Riverfield? I thought you said no initially. Tom?
For this specific question, we didn't use Riverfield's number. We did look at past projects we've done, Stratfields, Fairfield Woods, Riverfields, that came out. But we've been using the state's Department of Education Bureau of School Facility numbers because they include soft costs, contingency, material testing, environmental. They have a group amount of stuff that they use, and we use their square footage numbers.
So what I'm hearing you say is you did look at the other numbers, and in the end you decided on using a number from the state. Okay, but they're in the ballpark. In other words, it's.
It's not going to make a material difference.
Okay.
And the reason for focusing on that is because, you know, of the $5 million in cost, 4.7 is based on a 375. And of the $6 million cost, 5.6, that's based on a $450 per square foot estimate. So that's the reason for asking the question on that.
Right. The, if you look at the portion of the classroom proposal in the Silver Petrosali plan, you can see that that alone is less than this. So this is definitely the more economical way to do it. You know, that's the point on that, I think, that we want to make. Unless we want to go and look at the classroom addition versus the recapturing of the classroom space, there's a pretty good-sized delta in there as well. So regardless of the political or the logistical issues associated with redistricting, from a purely financial point of view, this is the most cost-effective solution to the problem of not enough space at our two high schools.
My two quick top-level takeaways from this are, even if these were, even if the square footage numbers here were high, and even if you dialed the back by 25%, which would be a big number to dial the back, you'd still be at roughly $8 million, give or take some change. And that $8 million still significantly exceeds the classroom expansion portion of the Ludlow project that we're currently looking at, even discounted by 25%. So that validates that point for me. And in addition to that, the other point that you touched on is the logistics and, you know, the town processes that we would need to be going through to do something other than what we're looking at. Obviously, we always have options available to us, and we always want to look at everything.
Right.
And make sure that we're making the right choices, short-term and long-term, and for every constituent. But it would be inaccurate to say that if we said no to this, that we could just plop that other project down and have that project moving at the same speed on the same schedule.
Right. Not feasible.
Okay, thank you.
Those are the points I wanted to make on that particular question, that we'd not actually put figures down on it, we had just talked about it in generalities. I thought that would be helpful.
But those are my takeaways, I missed.
Yes. I think that's really all I had to present. I guess we're just, Mr. Hatze is here, and I know you took the tour, and we appreciate the fact you took the time to do that. So I guess we're just here for questions at this point.
Any further follow-up questions from the board?
Do you want to go?
No, wait, go ahead.
I'll go, okay. A couple quick follow-up questions. With Mr. Hatze sticking us through the tour, we got to see the school, the facilities, the lunchroom, and the windows, and, you know, the rest of the building that's going to be affected by this project. And we thank you for that very much. One of the questions that I had asked during the course of the tour was, and I will need some explanation from the administration on this, was, one of the points that was raised was that a lot of students aren't able to take lunch because of the curriculum load or the curriculum and class choices that they're making. And there's health issues associated with that. There's a lot of issues associated with a child who's, you know, 15, 18 years old, who's leaving the house at 7:00 and not getting home till, at the earliest, 3:00, but if they're going to after-school things after dinner, and not addressing, you know, their nutritional needs during that whole day. So my question was, if we invest in this science-based, if we invest in these rooms that are going to expand our science abilities to schedule around them and allow the other offerings, will every child be able to take lunch? And, I guess even more importantly, will they be required to take a lunch, or will they be allowed to continue to forego lunch for a class?
Okay, got about three things at once in there. If I can parse them out, all good questions. I'll start, Greg, and jump in, please. So the lunch question is a scheduling problem. We would like to institute a schedule at the high school level that does several things to improve upon the current schedule. One of those, not be the only reason, but one of those would allow students to have a lunch, regardless of whether they take the full eight classes that are in the current schedule. So they would be scheduled in for a lunch. Lunch really wouldn't be an option there. It'd be the 30-minute. That's the traditional way high schools are scheduled. This is the first high school I've seen where there's no lunch. So there's many permutations of a schedule that could allow that to happen, and that's what the discussion will have to be maybe over the next six or eight months. It's a very contentious issue. So that's one thing. High school students, in terms of science, we need these additional science classrooms so we can maintain the parity in the offerings between the two high schools. Because we're running into the situation, and you saw the schedule that Patrice put out and so forth, that we're running up against a wall where Greg is finding it next to impossible to schedule the Ludlow science classes at the same level of time that the curriculum calls for and that Ward is able to do. That's some of the urgency around this. And so to maintain the parity in the amount of time, we need to do this expansion as well. So there's a couple different points there. I think it is not a good idea to have students going eight periods through without a lunch.
Dr. Ty, if I might just clarify one of the points there which hit me, and just to, when talking about the science classrooms?
Yep.
Am I correct? One of the issues there is there's a state mandate defining the number of students, maximum number of students that can be in a science classroom. So in essence, the state is saying that you can only have 24 kids, you can't have 25, you can't have 26. So the state is basically telling us we have those limitations, so that, in fact, defines the number of seats we need and how many seats we can put in a classroom. And by doing that, also defines the number of classrooms we have to have for X population.
There's a limit, the science limit, it's actually in the contract, but it's a practical thing as well. If you're having kids who labs, there's a safety factor as well. I don't know if there's a statute around that.
Two separate issues. I think somewhere we heard it was a state statute. Is it a contract requirement that we negotiate into our teacher contract, or is it a state statute?
There's a contract limit, I know that.
The contract limit is based on the state.
Yeah, the state, okay.
So there is a state statute. Okay, thank you.
And even if there are.
Sorry.
No, no, that's.
Even if there were no state statute, you'd be very hard-pressed to have more than 24 students in a science lab without having safety concerns and the liability attendant with that. Greg, did you want to address the other questions that Mr. Kylie had? Or do you think I address your questions well enough, or do you want Mr. Hatze?
I'd like to get his take.
Greg's going to talk, if he could come up to the mic.
How it all fits together, the science, the lunch, the scheduling, the students, the flow of the children through the school, you know, just kind of a big picture.
Sure, I think Dr. Ty summarize it really well. You know, I think, as I mentioned at the tour, is that currently we are, you know, we could not house a single additional section of science with the population that we have now. Luckily, our enrollment projections for next year are such that we will run exactly the same number of sections, so we'll be able to handle it for next year. And with the 24-seat maximum, which again is there for safety reasons, you know, when you have students using chemicals and large equipment in the physics labs and the such, you know, there are several requirements that revolve around that, including, you know, the use of safety wear and goggles and having eye washes and, you know, all of the other things. The 24-seat max is a part of that. And so therefore, you know, we, you know, our sections are currently, you know, close to capacity. When we schedule, we always try to schedule for an average of 22 to 23 students in a class because you could always have new enrollments in, and if we're scheduling for 24 a class, then, you know, there's the possibility that we would not be able to offer science to a student. So, but there are sections that are at capacity currently. There are some sections that might have, you know, like I said, 22 or 23. In terms of the lunch waves, again, you know, right now, you know, it's a family option to opt out of the lunch. I mean, when the students request their schedule, we make sure our guidance counselors, our school counselors, talk in-depth to students about the importance of having a lunch and a break in their day. We are very strong advocates for all students to have a lunch. But it, you know, as I said, many students are opting to take additional classes to create, you know, a transcript that reflects a highly rigorous course load, you know, for the competitive colleges that our students are applying to. And because they think the option is there for them to skip the lunch, they take advantage of it. We also, you know, have other students who, you know, who willingly choose the lunch and take advantage of that. So, but it would be a goal, I think, of our school system to be able to let every student, you know, take advantage of that for a variety of reasons, you know, besides the nutritional value and just taking a break in their day mentally. But it may also, you know, create opportunities for students to gather, to talk about, you know, things that are going on in their classes. It's a social opportunity, which are also an important part of the high school experience.
You touched on, I think, one of my questions, which was, they will still have the option to, will they still have the option to not take a lunch and use this period for something other than lunch?
If, you know, there are students that I think that will, you know, maybe need extra help, and so if it's a free period that coincides with a teacher that also is not teaching at that time or has their scheduled lunch at that time, you know, there might be those opportunities that are taken advantage of. But in terms of a whole scale, you know, every day I opt not to be a part of lunch, that will not be the case.
Okay, so while it's not an absolute solution to that problem, it allows everyone the opportunity to take advantage of that lunch period, should they choose, and should it make sense for them and what they're studying?
Right, assuming that we have the space to allow it, and assuming that, you know, we have the schedule that will facilitate that. But that is obviously the goal for us.
And that is the desired outcome by the administration, the school, and the Bureau of Education? Is that a consistent desired outcome?
I can speak from my perspective. The timing of this would be such that it will take us a bit of time to come up to a scheduling solution.
Right.
And work through the permutations. At the same time, even if this project is approved by June 30th by all the town bodies, there's going to be time before this happens. So the timing of this would work out, in my view, that we would have the time to do a thoughtful analysis of what the proper schedule would be.
Right.
And then, when the space is available, we're ready to launch with a new schedule. One of the obstacles the last time to the schedule, in addition to the physical space, was the staffing requirements that appeared to be necessary to that. I don't believe that's necessarily the case. I don't think that, I think we can design a schedule that does not impact staffing requirements nearly to the degree it did before.
Mm-hmm.
So, but that's going to take some time to work through. But the good thing is that while we're working through those issues of the schedule, construction people will be working through the issues of the building, and it should work well together.
And just once. Yes, if you don't mind. I was just.
No, I just could give you that Mr. Dwyer just asked me to address it from a historical point of view, and the board.
Pam, if you would be good enough.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pam Iacono, Vice Chairman of the Board of Education. The board as a whole has asked in setting priorities that Dr. Ty put moving to, the most recent thing that they looked at is called an eight-drop-two schedule so that students would have to take lunch. So that is something that we have on the radar and something that we want to get to. But as Dr. Ty mentioned, we can't move to the eight-drop-two schedule or scheduled lunch period, whether it be the eight-drop-two or not, unless we have the cafeteria space to accommodate all the students to be able to have a scheduled lunch time. So that's been one of the obstacles. And as a board, that is one of our objectives of where we're working to get to. We couldn't do it this budget season for lots of different reasons, but one of those obstacles is cafeteria space.
Just one last follow-up on that. So while there isn't the perfect solution here, I guess my final question is, you know, just, does this project make the proper investments in that school to allow these scheduling changes to accommodate the needs and to make these offerings to the students, whether there's exceptions or other reasons to do something different?
You would help.
It does provide that end result, is the answer.
Yes, you would be helping us get one step closer to getting a new schedule in place so that students would be able to have a scheduled lunch.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Kristen, did you have some follow-up questions?
Follow-up to the lunch, and actually something you said, Dr. Ty, which was, the lunch question is a scheduling, has to do with scheduling, but it also has to do with the physical space. And something you said about Ward, and I never asked this on the tour, is Ward equipped at this point? If the schedule were to go, and I know we have ways to go, to eight-drop-two, would Ward be able to handle that?
Ward could handle it with the existing size, provided their student population, you know, if we don't redistrict, they can do it with the numbers we have projected for Ward and the size of the cafeteria. So yes, Ward can handle it with the existing square footage. We, I should say that it's not a foregone conclusion that eight-drop-two is the answer. That's an example of the one that was preferred at that time, but things have changed since then. There's other options I would like to take a look at. Because we're not doing this simply for lunch. I do want to say that.
Understood.
There's a concern with the eight periods students are in right now. They move about, that means seven different times during the day. It's a lot of wasted time as kids are moving about, and of course, the building's relatively crowded, they're moving about in a more confined space. It's a lot of thought. Many high schools have gone to schedules where there's longer periods, less passing time. This also would allow us to pick up some additional instructional time, that's another factor. More depth in a particular class, teachers rushing through to get through material in 42 minutes or 41 minutes. It's really kind of a 1950s model, trying to run a school for the 2000s, so. That, there's just a number of improvements. Lunch is one improvement. As I say, we want to look at this as a whole improvement in the way we deliver instruction to increase the amount of instructional time in our high schools. Right now, our high schools have less instructional time than some other high schools because of the clunky schedule we have. So we think we can remedy this, and changing the schedule is not a, you know, changing the instructional minutes and doing this is not an impact on bargaining you to work or anything like that. So we think we can create time out of thin air by redoing the schedule.
Just a follow-up to that, and I am grateful that you've stated that. The questions that I have about scheduling with respect to lunch have to do with this project, and I recognize that that conversation is a much broader conversation, and certainly instructional time is critical, and I am glad you noted that for us. However, with respect to lunch, at this point, what percentage of Fairfield as a whole, high school students approximately do not take a lunch? Does anyone have?
Take the eight periods? A third?
Yeah, about a third.
About a third of the student body.
Okay, so it's a fairly significant number of students who are doing that.
As Greg said, you know, we have a lot of students that, they want to challenge themselves, they want to take the max, they're ready for it, they're able to do it. themselves, they want to take the max, they're ready for it, they're able to do it, and it's a tough choice that we're putting them in right now.
Absolutely.
You know, either take the eight classes or take lunch, which you can't have both. And, you know, that puts some students in a very difficult position. Also, you could have students, not just the challenged, kids who want the extra challenge, but students who might need to make up class they failed. And again, do I make up the class or do I take a lunch? They want to stay on track to graduate. We want all our kids to graduate in four years. There's a lot of reasons why kids might want to take the eight. There's also kids for whom eight is not the right answer, and we would want to restrict that. Doesn't mean that every kid is going to be able to take eight. That's one, that's how the staffing thing comes in. So we need to look at all of these nuances as well, but right now, we're forcing kids into a bad, a bad choice.
Right.
You know, the families make it going in, you know, they know what they're getting into, but it's, it's not a good, you know, a situation we can remedy.
Yeah, no, just thank you for that, and again, you know, in looking at what we're looking to spend and invest in, you know, it helps to have context and understand what we're doing and why we're doing it, and certainly for me, the cafeteria piece does allow for us to provide not only that healthy alternative, but hopefully down the road, the increased instructional time too. So I think, I'll defer, I think Select and Kylie had a follow-up to that, too.
Go ahead.
I do, if we're, are we good with the lunch discussion for now?
For now, yeah.
Yeah, we'll come back to it if we need to, but go right ahead.
Could I move on to the science discussion a little bit, because Mr. Hattas did a great job of walking us through the science areas and, and helping us understand the program, the classrooms, and the needs, and how they affected the schedule. And then we sat with your students, and I learned a lot by listening to your students, and from them, if you could maybe summarize a little bit of some of those comments, I heard a lot of comments from the students about how their science curriculum was, I don't know, disjointed for, lack of a better word, where there was a class there and a class there, and people were running and trying to get to where they were going, and teachers weren't maybe not as available, not as available as necessary because of the schedule or the logistics of everything that was going on, so could you touch on that for us, please?
I sure can. The, you know, I think a lot of what the students see is that their teachers, you know, as, as they're coming into the classroom, their teachers are also running into the classroom because they're coming from, you know, a different location from where they, they, you know, were teaching a different class. And it, it may be even the same subject, it could be, you know, a certain level of biology or chemistry class, but because that teacher has to do it in two separate rooms, and in, and again, the reason for that is because you can only fit so many science classes in a room because of the lab schedule, because those are additional periods that, you know, the class meets. As they're traveling from room to room, you know, they have to worry about the setup of those labs or, you know, any other materials that are related to the lesson for that day. It may just even be the demonstration that they were gonna perform to show the students, you know, certain aspects of an experiment or, you know, a process in science. So as the teachers, you know, have to change from room to room, you know, invariably, they have to do that setup. When they have their prep periods, they might have limited access to another classroom that they'll be teaching in later because there's another class going on at that same time, you know, again, because the schedule is so jam-packed. So they, they lose that, you know, they lose those minutes, those precious minutes, to do the setups from one room to the other. It might also impact the students because they want to be able to talk to their teacher, you know, after class, you know, maybe they, they had a poor test grade, and they wanted to maybe follow up a little bit more on some of the explanation, but their teacher has a requirement to get from that classroom to another location in the five minutes of passing time, making sure that those students are there on time as they should be, and do whatever setup they will do. So they would have to tell the student right then and there, "I can't speak to you now, but, you know, maybe you can meet me after school today, maybe you can come in early tomorrow, one of your free periods," and so they're always jockeying to figure out when they can get together, you know, instead of, if that teacher was just to be in place in that one room, you know, he could spend that, or he could, she could spend that, those couple of minutes, you know, conferencing with the student, getting through some of those issues, you know, reviewing the homework from a day that this child was absent, whatever it might be, and then, you know, but, but they're running off, you know. So, so, you know, there's a lot of issues that, that relate to the schedule and the teachers having to move around so much. You know, I, you know, I've asked, asked some of the teachers, you know, to put their thoughts together as well, which I believe we shared with you too, you know, and, you know, and they, they touch on those, those same topics, but also, you know, just the dynamic of, "Hey, I need to get in your, that room to set up, do you mind if I do that quietly in the background while you're teaching this class?" And, you know, and usually, you know, we try to be as accommodating as we can, you know, sometimes, you know, you're gonna be making noise while you're trying to make, set up a lab, and the kids might be taking a test, and so then you don't really want to be making the noise. Or, you know, just setting up a classroom environment, you know, where you can take student work and post it, or you can, you know, even putting up posters on the wall that kind of build an environment for students that want to be, you know, that want to be in that room, to be inviting, and when you, when you're not, when you're located in several different places, you never really take ownership of that, or you never really feel comfortable taking ownership because there's so many other people that are sharing in that, let alone, you know, the carting of materials, just the physical nature of them having to bring all their materials with them. If a child were to say, "I missed class yesterday, there was an important handout," you know, the, the test study guide or whatever it might be, you know, it's very difficult for the teacher to say, "Oh, that's located in this other room, why don't you follow me after class and we'll see if we can get it before your next class," but then the student has to go to a different part of the building. So they, they carry everything with them for each of their classes to make sure that they always have the current handouts, you know, current information and everything for, for the students. So, you know, those are just, those are some of the, the things that came up, both from the students and the teachers.
And it sounds like those issues are caused by a combination of A, scheduling, and B, the lack of the physical classroom space.
Yeah, it's, it's, well, the scheduling problem is created by the lack of the physical space.
So they're all interrelated.
That's right.
Okay. Any other follow-up points at this point?
Not about science, actually, this one may be back to Mr. Silver.
Thank you.
Just about the cafeteria and student lounge piece, and the, if you could remind me or help me understand, the cafeteria square footage, if, I'm looking at the new document, it's thirty, approximately 3,200 square feet of new space?
Correct.
And the student lounge, is there, what's the square footage?
About 1,100 square feet, 1,200 square feet, yes.
Okay, so it's in addition to that cafeteria, right?
Which, which crosses out at that 4,300 square feet of gross addition area. And the student lounge is on a different area, on the backside of the kitchen cafeteria area, not out on that south lawn.
Great, thank you. I just, I want to touch base for a second, I, and try and understand, and perhaps this one is for Mr. Hattas, I think, I don't have a lot of familiarity with student lounge, I am a new high school parent, so I do know that there, that Ward, which is where my child is, has a lounge area that is primarily for seniors to go and be, and my understanding from our tour is that the area that the students have was what we saw right there, attached to the cafeteria. And in some respects, I think, perhaps I'm a little old-fashioned in that, why do the students need a lounge, right? That part of what we do in our educational settings is we certainly provide opportunities through extracurriculars and clubs and all that. I heard pretty clearly from the students that they were looking for extra space, simply because there are so many of them, and one of the things that I heard was that they need a space to work and to study, so, and that's, I think, very significant and important. I certainly don't want to imply that the socialization portion of high school is not an important piece, which is something that I think having a dedicated lunch period helps with, but I think it's, you know, part of my question is, when we're looking at trying to provide those extra spaces for kids to be and to move about the building, what, if you can help me understand better the reasoning behind it, the purposes of the various rooms, I recognize, we saw the crowding in the library, and certainly it was not conducive to concentrated work, there was, you know, group opportunity work, but if, I don't know if I'm being completely clear, but in other words, the need for a student lounge, if you can help address that need and why that's important and, and a necessity for the kids.
I think you touched on some of the points, both that the students brought up, you know, just having a physical space to go to get work done is obviously a really important aspect for students to be able to be successful, if they're engaged in lots of extracurricular activities or athletics or drama or music. They need to capitalize the minutes of their day that they have to, to get, you know, the rigorous course load that they have and the homework and the projects and whatnot done. So the library is one of those spaces, for sure, but what we would really love to do is to create a library that is a place, that is a serious work environment. And as I think you all witnessed, what you see is that right now, the library has really become more of a social gathering location for students. You know, they do, they are required, you know, to get a pass to go there, so, but I think what ends up happening is that they may go there with all the intentions of working, but because of the sheer volume of students that are in there, it becomes difficult for them to engage. So, so that's, that's one aspect. Another really important aspect, I believe, is that, you know, I have to say, you know, being an educator, you know, for, for 20 years, the one thing that I have seen grow exponentially is the amount of pressure and the amount of stress that our students are facing. The social pressures alone, with the social media, you know, phenomenon that has taken hold over the last five years, and, you know, college acceptance, the pressures around that have only got, have only increased year after year after year. You know, we, in Fairfield, we have a lot of students who, who get into highly competitive colleges, and, you know, the, if you can say there's a drawback to that, what it is is it creates an environment where students feel like, "Well, if I don't do that, I'm a failure." So, so that, that's a factor, and just, I think, social anxiety alone, you know, has just grown tremendously. The number of cases of, of anxiety that we see is, is just grown, grown up and up every year. So the reason I bring that up, though, is because having a place for students to just take a minute, to take a break, to talk about issues, to be able to resolve conflicts, to be able to laugh about a situation, to celebrate in each other's victories and each other's accomplishments, you know, those types of moments in the day, they don't have enough of those, and, you know, for them to go class by class by class by class with the, with the stress that they face, and then, when they have a free moment to sit down and either get some homework done or have a conversation or work on a project collaboratively with one of their colleagues, to not have a place to go just adds to the stress. You know, I, I met with a, a parent, second or third week of school, whose son was, was really having a hard time at home because he just wanted to be able to type up, you know, type up his homework or type up his paper, their computer at home was broken, and, and he didn't know where to go to be able to access a computer in the school, because one of the few places he did know about was in our library. But by the time, as a freshman, he would go to a study hall, he would get a pass to go to the library, by the time he got to the library, the 28 computers that were there were all taken up by the juniors and seniors who, who, you know, could go there immediately instead of having to check in at a study hall. So, so he was, he was facing stress just being able to access something for that, and, you know, and those are the types of stories that I hear all the time from students. So the lounge, what that does is it creates a dedicated space, we can keep the library intact as a place of work, a place of study, a place of quiet, and then we can have a lounge where the students can gather, and for all the things that high school students do, volunteer rates are out the roof. It's amazing how many kids are involved in volunteer activities, and they're always organizing. You know, if they're, if they're in the key club or if they're in the Student Representative Council or Student Government, you know, they're looking to, you know, talk to each other, you know, tell them about other events, organize things, "We're gonna be having a homeless awareness, you know, a couple nights from now, we're gonna have students, you know, creating a shanty in the parking lot," like, they're engaged and active in so many social causes now, and that takes interaction with each other. And I'll just throw in there, just for the last, in the last bit here, with, with the way the students text and are on their, on their phones and on their computers so much now, I hear so many, so much from our professionals, our educators, teachers, that they're really worried about this generation not being able to, to have those social skills that are gonna be necessary for them to be able to stand up at a board meeting in the future, or go see their professor in college to be able to advocate for themselves, because they're constantly like this. So if we can create a space where they can engage with each other in a social manner, we're, we're doing them a big service, and so, you know, that's, that's kind of the, sorry, the long, the long story of the lounge.
And I, and I don't know, I'm a social worker, so I have a very clear understanding of the importance of those social interactions, and it's critical, and in some cases, it's life and death, I do understand that very much. However, I'm trying to understand specifically, because the cafeteria is a place that can meet a lot of those needs in terms of, as a space and as a physical space. So when I think about where can, kids can gather, if we have a cafeteria space that is available and we're expanding it, that, that is a space that is a usable space to do some of those things. It's not the same as a lounge. The lounge, and I'm trying to understand too, the study hall, again, I'm, I'm new at this high school thing, so I don't really know, is the lounge available to everyone in the school, or is it just available to the older students? And when kids are in the lounge, is it during a study hall period, a free period, and how often is that space used? So I guess the three different questions.
Sure. We have a, we have a dedicated area just for seniors, it's been a, you know, I guess a longstanding tradition that it, you know, when you get to your senior year, there are certain privileges that you have earned, you know, by surviving, I guess, to your senior year, and, and that space was, you know, kind of across the hall from that place that you, you referenced earlier, you know, it's a separate dedicated space, and, you know, in, in the redesign, if you will, you know, what I would like to do is to create a larger, a larger area that would be accessible to anyone, but then still give the seniors, you know, their due by, by maybe carving out a section of it that, you know, they could still maintain, you know, and kind of plant their flag and say, you know, as seniors, you know, this is, this is our space. But, but right, the cafeteria would not be available for those purposes during the lunch waves, so, you know, it's, it wouldn't be conducive to having those types of conversations just because of the volume. I mean, as you remember, we were standing in the cafeteria, you know, we were talking about things, and we, we had to, we had to go outside because just the volume in there, you're really, it's really tough to have, you know, that kind of conversation in the cafeteria. So for, you know, a large chunk of the day, it wouldn't be available, you know, in that regard. Now, the other parts of the day, we, the cafeteria is, you know, is available for students to go and sit, but it's, you know, it's a matter of, to me, it's a matter of environment, you know, it's this massive space, it doesn't create, you know, any sense of community, it doesn't create any sense of, you know, conducive communication, and, and sometimes it literally is just the, you know, you know, just the aesthetics of it, that, that it's not, it's not a place that students take advantage of or use. So my, you know, what I would hope is that anything that we call a lounge would be something that would not only fit the purpose of, of those, you know, social opportunities, but also, if the lunchroom is really crowded still, that kids could overflow and have lunch in the lounge, so we would have it adjacent to the cafeteria, and so it would be still a part of that whole, you know, that whole aspect. You know, I think of a, you know, when you go to a college campus, you know, the idea of a commons, something where, you know, you can get a bite to eat, you can have a conversation, and it's just a little bit more of an intimate experience, so that, you know, it's valuable socially for the students as well.
But the other part of my question was, so if a student has a study hall, and are they, are they required to go to a specific place, or are they, could they go to the lounge as well?
Currently, what we do is, for freshmen and sophomores, we assign them to a study hall during any free period, and they are assigned to a classroom. So in order to create that quiet environment in, you know, in a, so that they can get work done, it's a small, you know, it's a small group, it's a, you know, it's a classroom, so maybe 20 kids in a supervised environment, as opposed to only having, you know, one or two teachers trying to supervise a room that fits, you know, 280, 300 students in it. So, so we do that on purpose to kind of, you know, for, for the management piece of it. An expanded cafeteria might allow us to do, to do some things, where we can, we can cordon off certain areas for certain purposes, and, you know, we, we would re-look at that whole thing. In, in the lack of space and the overcrowding that we have now, you know, we, we may be looking to do that just in the next couple of years anyway, but I think the kids suffer in that regard because of the, you know, the environment isn't as conducive to getting work done in the cafeteria as it is in a, in a classroom or a lounge.
So you addressed the freshmen and sophomores, would the juniors and seniors then be available? In other words, I'm trying to understand how... In other words, I'm trying to understand how, how much use this space will get in, trying to look at the project. So, juniors and seniors, they could go to an assigned classroom, to the cafeteria, the library, the lounge, when they have a study hall or a free period? Is that why?
Yeah, they don't have study halls assigned to them. They, they have a free period, and so they have those, they have those options. Once they go to a certain location, you know, they're kind of, you know, that's, that's where they stay, you know, for that period, you know, unless they have permission or a pass to be able to, to, you know, to, you know, go see a teacher or make an appointment with the administrator or whatever it is they need to do.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That helps me understand. I appreciate it.
Mr. Kiley, any further questions?
I'm good.
Christian, any other areas that you wanted to ask about?
Just a, a question, the ever-popular enrollment projections question. I noted, and you noted to us actually, that in the ed specs, the, the Ludlow High School projections had been changed as of May 1st, I believe. And, but the ward, the projections that we have from this document are back from 2010. So, in terms of being able to compare numbers, these haven't been updated.
Right.
Okay. So, just, you know, I, I say that.
We can do that.
Okay. So, that, that, that might be something helpful, you know, assuming, which is a big assumption, I suppose, but assuming this conversation continues to other boards, just because I think that question, it goes back to the ECC, though you've addressed it this way. I think the question of the difference in population at the two facilities is, is an ongoing question.
Right. We, we use an outside firm to do our demographic work. We don't do that in-house. And we asked them to do an update just for Ludlow because the project required it to file with the Bureau of School Facilities. We had not asked them to do the ward project. We actually are about to engagement discussions about another update anyway, so we can ask them to update the ward numbers for us. So, I think they can do that relatively quickly. The ward numbers, if anything, appear to be, you know, on track or higher. The incoming ninth grade, just as an example, this year was higher than we projected. So, I don't think we're going to get any relief there from that, but we'll, we can update those. It's a fair point.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have no further questions.
Good part of the public evidence?
No.
You okay with both of us, Kevin, or do you want to add?
No, I'm fine.
Any questions from the public at this time?
Comments?
Or comments, I guess I should say. Thank you for the reminder on that. If you'll come up to the podium, introduce yourself.
Betty Ann O'Shaughnessy, Queens Grant Road. Three years ago, I wrote a document that I sent to you that had a lot of concerns. And those all are still concerns. In addition, we're only, when I look at this, these numbers, my remembrance is that we spent a million dollars doing ECC, 2 million at most. How could that turn into 11 million just a few years later? That's one question I have. I'm also, we're, we're renovating for 1525. We have 1528 now. We're not increasing hallway space, we're not increasing auditorium space, we're not increasing library space, we're not increasing the size of the gym, so that the reason that gym is the size it is was to try to hold the entire school. We won't be able to do that. So, I'm still, the site is so tight, and as you saw when you visited, how do you fit 250 more students there? How do you fit 250 more students in the hallways? In the library, it has 75 seats. It, it's just, where do you put the kids? I mean, last year, we put benches for kids to have a place to study in the halls. It's really, I see the site as just not safe for this many students, and I would like to see an analysis before you would approve this to show that it is safe, that it can handle that number, not just that we're going to squeeze them in. And also, when we did the, opened the second high school, remember, two equal high schools. We have not had parity between our high schools in years. You heard about the, how the teachers are going all over the halls to different classrooms. The students get, don't get time with them. I know when my children were there, they'd have conferences with a teacher if they could find a space. An English teacher is supposed to have conferences with all their students, but they couldn't find spaces, and they would meet in a closet somewhere, if they could find a closet to meet in. It's a real problem. And years ago, the teacher spaces, there were three teacher spaces, and now there's one at Ludlow, and that happened years ago. The other teacher spaces had to be taken away to create more classroom space. So, I don't even know if the 1,400 is really a good number. It's very, very tight with 1,400, you know, with 1,400. Now, we're 15, over 1,500. It's, the kids just aren't getting the same education that they could get if the space were compatible with ward space. So, that is my underlying concern, is that the kids won't fit. You have more buses, you have more traffic. Can you do a study to show that this is feasible and safe? And that if there is an emergency, you can evacuate that school in a timely manner, is one of my concerns. But on a daily basis, I have a concern. Also, as far as the schedule goes, when that schedule came up, it cost a million dollars more per, I think it was per school. So, at least a million dollars more in operating. That was several years ago. We are cutting music. We're cut, we're charging students to park when the parking lots aren't even being monitored to make sure that everybody has a permit and that the students who pay for parking can get a parking space. So, there are a lot of just daily operating details that I just, I just don't know that we can handle. And when I see that the budget is being cut for programs year after year, I don't see that we're going to find millions of dollars to do a new schedule to incorporate lunch into it. So, do we really need to spend the money on the cafeteria at this point in time if we're, if the reason we're doing it is so we can do a new schedule? Would it be better to wait on that until we actually see that we have the money to do a new schedule? I just, you know, I, I hate it that the kids don't have lunch, but I just don't know that we should spend the money if we don't change the schedule, if that's not in sight. Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Maybe kind of come up and introduce yourself.
My name is Lisa Havy, and I live at 216 Longview. Pretend I'm Kathy Coyle, and I live at 84 Sherwood Farms Road in Fairfield. Kathy is the PTA president at Ludlow High School and had to leave for an engagement. So, am I best Kathy? The immediate need for high school space is not rocket science, but it does have a lot to do with science. As you know, Fairfield High School does not have the space to provide one more additional science class, even though our enrollment is increasing. Currently, 12 of 19 science teachers instruct out of two or three different rooms. Fairfield Ward's situation is not much better with six out of 17 science teachers traveling between rooms. I have spoken with some of our Ludlow science teachers, and on non-lab days, they lose an average of eight minutes for transport and setup of their regular classroom. On lab days, the time lost is much greater. Each complex lab setup and breakdown takes, on average, 25 minutes of instructional time away from our teachers and students. Currently, at Ludlow, 90% of our 1,528 students take science while 63% of our science teachers travel. That means over 800 Ludlow students lose 19 to 30 hours of instructional time a year. That is unacceptable. Local and national businesses cannot find enough qualified applicants for their science, technology, engineering, and math jobs. As a district, we are severely disadvantaging our students by not delivering a vigorous curriculum in these areas. If we do not get additional space as soon as possible, our science curriculum, as well as all the other areas of study, will continue to be diminished. I am also greatly concerned that the proposed expansion will not even accommodate the students that we have now. When we reach 1,700 students with the expansion, we will be in the same predicament we are in now. We will not have enough space, and the possibility of traveling teachers and lost instructional time is very high. We desperately need high school space for our students. Please do not deny the solution. On behalf of Kathy, I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Lisa. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Sue Grand, Board of Education member. Just a point of information. When we, again, were looking at the high school schedules and some of the options, one of the things that happened when you look at instructional time, it looked like we were on the bottom of the barrel. Part of the reason for that was we have what we call free periods. And since they are considered free periods, they're considered non-academic, and they counted against the school. Other high schools call them study halls, in which case they got academic credit for them. So, we may actually not have as big a differential, and at the time, that was actually the thinking, that it wasn't as great. Another point to make, that instructional time, quite frankly, should have a goal and an objective, meaning to improve student achievement, as well as providing a lunch. So, we were looking at whether or not investing in this was actually going to have a yield. There is a timeframe in which we know high school students actually do well in their learning time. If you have an extremely long period, anyone that has a teenager knows, they just don't sit that long. So, there is a relative timeframe between about 45 to 50, 55 minutes. When you start to go a well beyond that, you quite frankly started to lose their kids, which did impact some of the options and then the recommendation, which was the AID Doc True, for what came before the board from the committee that did the study. All right? Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
PMI Conno, 68 F Road. Just want to address something, that was a couple of things, but one thing that I heard earlier regarding the high school schedule, that was several years ago, the million dollar number that came out. It was under a completely different superintendent. We have a new superintendent, new eyes to look at things, may or may not cost anywhere near that dollar amount, so I don't even think that should be taken into consideration. I think eating lunch is important. We're sending the complete and total wrong message to our students to allow them to schedule out of lunch and take a class. I just wholeheartedly, completely disagree with it. And we are setting them up for bad habits later on, even if they're signing up for the extra three AP courses. What are we teaching them? To become a cardiac surgeon and run yourself ragged and fall down dead because you didn't take a break to eat something? It's just not a good way to go. But I'm really, I came today because I, I'm concerned about things that I hear and the needs of our students overall as a district. And it's been a long time since I actually wrote anything down. I'm now used to just coming to the microphone and going off the top of my head of what I've heard, but this, I feel so strongly about that I've written things down to make points about. And that is that the Board of Education has discussed growing, this growing enrollment situation at both of our high schools on many occasions for several years. We all knew it was coming with the whole middle school population moving through, and now those kids are getting to high school. The majority of the Board of Education has determined that the best solution to address this issue is to put a small four-classroom addition and two-science classroom lab addition onto Fairfield Ludlow High School, as well as increase the cafeteria size to accommodate this growing student population. Ward is currently at capacity. Ludlow is overcapacity. Both enrollments at each high school are projected to continue to grow. There are approximately 160 more students at Fairfield Ludlow High School than Fairfield Ward. Redistricting is not a practical option. Why? It's impossible to redistrict and split 160 students perfectly so that each high school will have exactly the same number of students. If you move students out of Fairfield Ludlow High School and into the current Fairfield Ward High School, all you are doing is moving the overcrowding issue from Ludlow to Ward. The question has arisen about moving the early childhood center off the Ward campus and recapturing the space for high school students, so that there's more room at Ward and so that we can redistrict. This is not practical either. Why? By Fairfield standards, the ECC is new. As a town and as a school district, we have invested, invested significant monies into a specialized infrastructure that, at that location, most recently, a $200,000 investment in a special needs playground on the site. Children are not ping-pongs. Special needs students are not any less deserving of their specialized space than high school students are deserving of appropriate space for their learning. Our first obligation is not to high school students. Our first obligation is to all students. And by the way, we are required by law to provide services for identified children leaving the birth to three program prior to their starting kindergarten. The ECC is a separate facility that happens to be attached to Ward. It was not designated as high school space. It is not high school space. It is not designed as high school space, and it should not be dismantled to create high school space when there is no equivalent, appropriate, available location to move the ECC location in town. As we've seen today, it will cost more money to move the ECC to a new location, retrofit the new space for ECC students, than to renovate the old CC, ECC space into new space for high school students, using the BSF construction estimate. I've heard concerns about safety, but we have not received any notification from the fire marshal indicating safety risks due to overcrowding in the hallways at Fairfield Ludlow High School. Should the Fairfield, should the Fairfield, and should the Fairfield Ludlow High School project be approved, we will not be given a CO unless the building is safe for occupancy for all of our enrolled students. What we really need in this town is appropriate space for our students to learn, safe spaces for our students to learn, with roofs and windows that are safe. All of our students deserve this. I urge you to approve the Fairfield Ludlow High School project as proposed by the Board of Education in the best interests of all students and taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, it's back to the board. And with your permission, just, Dr. Tylo, I could ask a couple of clarifying questions from either you or your team. Question on that, kind of high school parity and balance, can you talk a little bit about what the guidelines are from your administration in terms of how, how are we maintaining parity between the high schools and how will this project impact it?
Right. So, we have been working on, since I've been here, maybe before I was here, to ensure that there's equity and consistency across the grade levels at all levels of the school system, and includes the high schools. So, we have a common curriculum. High school classes are expected to use the same textbooks, and they follow the same schedule. They offer the same set of course offerings at each high school. Now, sometimes courses will, electives will have enough students at one that they offer it, and another they don't, but the programs of studies are equivalent. If a science class is scheduled to be five days a week of regular class and two days a week at lab in one high school, then it would be the same at the other high school. It's really been a team effort from the high school administration and my deputy superintendent, Karen Parks, really spearheaded a, a high school leadership team that meets on a regular basis and services issues that may come up where inequities may pop up between the high schools. As those become available, they go on the agenda for that group and they, and they resolve them. So, consistency, equity are critical. We're always working on them. However, they'll never be identical. They have their own identities, they have their own histories and traditions that need to be embraced. There is going to be variation, but on the main point, we have an assured common curriculum and co-curricular activities available to both high schools, the same way we would do it for the three middle schools and the same way across the 11 elementary schools. Does that help?
Very much so. Thank you. As you look at a comparison between Ward and Ludlow, and to ask for complete comparison, I agree with you, it's, it's hard to get identical schools and, and programs. But between the space available, between the offerings, between the capabilities or capacities, and could you just identify the, the one, two, three most substantive differences between the high schools going forward, assuming this project moves forward?
Well, the space crunch is more pronounced at Ludlow. There are 100 and 120. There are one hundred and twenty-five more students there and approximately the same square footage. This project addresses that issue. Both high school populations are going to grow. They're projected to grow, level off at a higher number than where we are right now. So we're not building out to the absolute max of what will happen, but we're building out so that when it gets to the level where it levels off, we're still in a good spot. So probably the biggest difference right now, you know, within the interior of the school is that the Ludlow area is cramped compared to the Ward area, and that's why we have this project, and we thought this is most cost-effective. The Ward roof, as we all know from last season, or maybe the season before, is undergoing a complete four-year replacement because the warranty expired, and I know it's bringing back pleasant memories to think about it. This project will help bring that roof at Ludlow to parity, not the whole roof, but certainly the most, the parts of the roof that were out of warranty and that are the biggest danger, and of course, the part that blew off and caused us a lot of headaches. So in terms of the facility deficiencies, Ward is not in perfect condition. Ward has a lot of old windows. Ward, like Ludlow, have bathrooms that are both in lousy shape, and at some point down the road will need a renovation, but those are not in the immediate plans. So while Ward on the surface does appear to be, you know, a little better off physically, has, you know, more square footage per student, but Ward has some structural deficiencies. Ward does have some physical, structural imperfections in it that are not being resolved here either. It's not like Ward is this, you know, temple of perfection, and Ludlow is the poor stepchild. Both high schools have approximately one-third of the buildings air-conditioned. I know that was a hot topic, so to speak. And the Board of Ed did consider as part of this, and Mr. Silver estimated the cost of air conditioning for the remainder of the Ludlow project. When the figure came out, they took a deep breath and said, "Let's not do that right now." So they're comparable in terms of percentage of square footage being air-conditioned. But we really strive, and the headmaster's really strive to maintain, you know, most importantly, you know, equity and consistency in the academic and the co-curricular and extracurricular programs. That's the most important thing, and that we're constantly striving to do. But Ward has physical plan issues, boilers that are old, Ludlow's boilers that are old. You know, these buildings were not renovated perfectly, just to put it mildly.
And then just one other follow-up point would be on the, kind of the fire evacuation and kind of overall safety issues with Ludlow and the renovation.
Right.
And if you could, or again, you or one of your team could touch on kind of how we, what's the process by which we make sure that the renovations are incorporated and current fire safety, life safety building codes are met, and to the extent that you can also then touch on the security component of that in terms of what are we doing as part of this project to help make Ludlow more secure?
Let me, that Bill, answer you the code stuff.
Okay.
Reserve security for you. Right? Every expansion project requires due diligence as it comes to building and fire safety codes, health codes, and accessibility codes. So we actually have four major bodies or codes that we do review with. Those are done not just with the professionals in our offices or in your architects and engineers' offices, they're double-checked by your local officials, usually at the very preliminary design time, but then more thoroughly when we come in for permits. There's yet another level of checking beyond that, which is the Bureau of School Facilities. They have their code experts, which spend easily sixty days reviewing eleven million dollars' worth of work and truly dissecting the plans for their overall fire and life safety, not just of the addition areas or the small expansions or the small renovations. They want us to prove total fire and life safety for the entire building. So we will analyze travel distances, doorway widths, fire separations, fire safety areas, sprinkler protection if it's required. It goes the full gamut. It is truly an acid test that happens not just at the local level with the officials, but up at the state level with the Bureau of School Facilities. And then quite often, code review will trickle into the state building official's office and the state fire marshal's office when they are consulted on any code modifications or any variations to the building codes or safety issues that need to be modified based either on the age or the impracticality of, let's say, tearing down an entire wing just because of a minor fire safety violation that can be corrected with other alternative methods that meet it. So the code oversight is complex. At very local level, local as your architect and engineer, through your public schools' safety staff, which also are code officials, to your local officials, to the state officials. And then quite often, we're involved in the health side with EPA Region One on the PCB issues, and then the Health Department at the state level as well as the local level. So it's truly vetted, and probably right up to the permit time, it probably has an intense six-month look by numerous code officials. And almost always on a plainer basis, but certainly relies on the eyes and ears of not only your design professionals, but your building and fire officials that know the buildings even better than we do, because they inspect them.
You mentioned accessibility. Does that include the ADA components?
Yes.
Specifically with Ludlow having so many levels and having been kind of added on to over so much time, how's the ADA accessibility issue addressed?
We have to prove it. We have to prove basic program accessibility, that one program space of each type is provided, but the school is very thoroughly vetted, if you want to call it that, in terms of accessibility. And in improvements that we make, we have to prove those for full accessibility, not just program accessibility.
Does this addition renovation impact the accessibility by either any serious expansion to the accessibility capability or any decrease in that?
No impact at all. It complies with what the needs are. So even, let's say, if your student population is going up and you may perceive a need for more accessibility, the code doesn't dictate that. You just have to have the minimal accessibility in terms of elevators, lifts, ramps, access points, as well as egress points. And that's another of the things that our code officials look at, is fire safety for the disabled, is other elements that we consider as part of our design. So to answer your question, no, there are no impacts by this project on your existing accessible features.
Thank you. Any security, please?
So this project actually launched pre-Sandy Hook. As you know, we're engaged in a very intensive process with the police department to examine all of our schools, and the police department is still working on that. We've not gotten a report on all of our buildings in terms of what might be necessary here. This project does not include specific enhancements to say, security in the spaces that we're not touching. In fact, the ed specs specifically say to the building committee, "Don't go there." Again, remember, we wrote these ed specs very tightly so that when you charge the committee, should this go that far, that they don't venture too far afield. However, it could be the case that down the road, depending on what the police department comes out with, looking at it from a system, from the town's point of view, we may want to revisit that, but that is currently in the existing spaces, not part of the project. But as Bill, I think, said last time, in the new spaces, then all of the latest safety features available have been incorporated into the design of the new spaces, but as we know, that's a relatively small amount of square footage. So to incorporate all possible security upgrades into this would be difficult to do, more expensive, and wasn't really part of the scope.
Thank you. Any further questions on the board?
Yes, just some follow-ups. Actually, Dr. Title, I just want to get confirmation, as our vice chairman from the Board of Education noted, the ECC services we are required to provide, I've heard different comments from various...
We're required by law to provide a free, appropriate, public education. Andrea, I know you'd be so proud of me. To all residents of Fairfield, from the day they turn three until the end of the school year in which they turn twenty-one. So we are required to provide services to children with identified disabilities on their third birthday. We transition them from birth to three, which is the responsibility of the state or local regional center. They transition to us at, on their third birthday. So that, our responsibility, the entire PPT process all kicks in prior to three, so they can transition in, and then so long as they remain identified, they either stay with us through high school graduation, if they graduate on time, or to age, the school year at the end of when they turn twenty-one. So if you turn twenty-one in November, you finish the year. That's how the state law works. So we are under that legal obligation. We are, we are not obligated to provide those services to students who do not have disabilities. District, as a matter of good practice, and finances has chosen to integrate students, what we call typical peers, in with our disabled preschool children, because it's best practice, it's encouraged, and we do charge those children tuition, which helps to offset some of our, some of our costs. We initiated that a couple of years ago as a cost-saving measure, but also because it was good educational practice. So the mandate is around children with disabilities, third birthday. That's the short answer.
Thank you. I have one other question, which is completely unrelated, in terms of that issue of looking at our two high schools, and I think the town really did commit to try and look at parity, which is not being identical, as you pointed out. They're going to each have their unique character. The number of classrooms, and then as a subset of that, the number of science classrooms per school, I don't need an exact number, but do we have a similar number of classroom spaces at Ward and Ludlow? And likewise, do we have a similar number of science classroom spaces at Ward and Ludlow?
It's pretty close. I don't know if it's identical, but it's very, very close in terms of the number of classrooms in each school. So science are dedicated, then you've got others that are general purpose.
Right.
So it's hard to say, well, do we have the same number of English classrooms?
Right.
Well, you know, they're more general. I don't want to hazard a guess. They're close, but they may not be identical in terms of the, in terms of the numbers. Maybe one more science classroom at Ludlow, there are more, but there's more kids there, so, you know, it's an issue.
We have fifteen classrooms.
Fifteen?
We have fifteen classrooms at Ludlow, and we're either has thirteen or fourteen.
Right. Yeah.
Science classrooms.
Science classrooms. Science classrooms, right.
And that was really the crux of my question.
Yeah, science classrooms.
Good question.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments?
No further questions.
I have further questions.
Questions, no? Comment, vote, yes?
Final comments before we vote?
Yeah. Want me to go? All right. I want to first thank everyone for all the work on this project and all the presentations and the board's involvement as well. For me, this kind of broke down, and I'll try to get through this pretty quickly, into a number of components. The first component that we didn't touch too much on today were the windows, the roofs, and the PCBs, and I think all that falls in the no-brainer bucket. Needs to be done, has to be done, should have been done, so, you know, let's get it done, all right? The rest of it, you know, there's a lot more to it, and I tried to take a measured look at it and tried to look at it from an investment perspective. And, you know, breaking that down, the first part of that would be the financial investment perspective, and I think we've received some pretty good presentations that this is the most cost-effective way to go about solving this problem. There's, there's a lot of problems we have, but this seems to be the most effective, financially effective, manner to solve this problem when you consider all the moving pieces and the alternatives. So I believe that box was checked for me. And in addition, the logistics around that were important to me, and I better understand those now, about how if we were to move ahead with this or not move ahead with this, what would not moving ahead would it mean as far as getting the problems solved? And I don't think there is an answer to that, whether it's put something else at another school, or whether it's the redistricting thing, or what it might be, but those proposals do not exist. Therefore, those timelines don't exist. Therefore, those solutions, from my perspective, don't exist. This proposal, from my perspective, appears to be the least disruptive that I've come to learn about from the student's perspective and the overall school system's perspective. So that was, that was good for me. And the other thing that I think I learned today was while our schools are different, they are unique, and they will never will be exactly the same, this project, I believe, takes us a step toward the schools being more equal, at least as far as, you know, delivering of the science program and the scheduling issues, the options to be able to schedule around lunch, and the teacher participation in the science programs that appears to be a bit disjointed at Ludlow for a number of reasons that we talked about. The other thing that was important to me was, you know, the preservation of the ECC. We have made a conscious investment in the ECC over the years, and for many good reasons that were spoken about eloquently by Dr. Title, and, you know, that we have had presentations on over the years. It's a wonderful program, it's necessary, it's required, it's in a great location. Can you argue the other side? Yes, sure you can, but that sets out a whole bunch of other issues, that would be logistics, financial, timeline, and above and beyond that, the ECC is a wonderful place, and they do great things there. And it's one of those things that's not broken, so I don't see a reason to attempt to move it or fix it. So I wouldn't be supportive of upgrading or of uprooting the ECC under any conditions. We talked about cafeteria and scheduling, and I, we learned a lot about how this proposal would be able to solve some of those issues, maybe not all of them, but most of them, and allow the school to be able to function more efficiently and handle more children, more students, allow them more options, and the ability to have lunch, which is, you know, very critically important. And I guess the last thing for me is it allows the science program to be delivered, and delivered in a manner that's efficient and equal to how the science program is being or can be delivered at Ward, again, getting me back to the schools becoming as equal as possible. I mean, many years ago, we did make, we did make a commitment to two high schools, equal high schools. They can't be mirrors, but we can make them as equal as we can over time by investing in resources and in people and in technology. And for me, this project does that, and, you know, for these reasons and many other great reasons I've heard, I'll be supporting this project.
Thank you. Kristen?
I'd like to thank Sleckman-Kiley for his comments. I feel like this is similar to Riverfield in that I concur with many, many of his thoughts. I have slightly different perspectives on a few, but I think to the maintenance and infrastructure needs, those are health and safety issues that are the bulk of this project. They are the majority of the funds of this project, and I think we've spent a lot of time talking about the population, which I'll address in a second, but the bulk of these funds are to put a new roof and new windows in and to deal with the PCBs, and we absolutely have to do that. So I agree with Sleckman-Kiley in that respect. We've had a lot of conversation about the population increases, the high school schedule, actually, I'll start with that. And when I looked at the other pieces of the project, the addition of space and looked at the cafeteria and student lounge, I am compelled to support the expansion of the cafeteria with the strong hope and encouragement that we will address our high school schedule. And I did say that at the tour, and I will emphasize that here. Not just to have a lunch for all students, which is significant, but to not only increase instructional time, but to enhance our students' ability to be competitive in the global economy that they are a part of and will be a part of. I'm not as excited about spending the money on the student lounge, as you can probably guess from my comments, though I recognize how, the role that it plays. I do think that our schools do a tremendous job with the extracurricular programs that are provided before and after school, and I recognize that they do, our kids participate in amazing, amazing things. And on to science, with respect to science, I do not ever want to see this town say no to a student who wants to take science. I am very much in support of the addition of the science space here, and I just want to go on the record saying, if we're anywhere near that kind of conversation, we need to explore every possible option. We need to, in today's day and age, make sure that we are offering more opportunities for kids to take science. There's no question about it. So I very much support that, that aspect of the project. With respect to the issue of student population and kind of the question that's been raised, and to acknowledge some of the concerns, I did receive a number of letters and emails, letters, there's that old-fashioned me again. letters, there's that old-fashioned me again, emails in support of this project, and some who had some concerns, and we heard here and last time as well, about the issue of the population differences at the two schools, and I think it's a valid concern. Where I concur strongly with Selectman Kylie is regarding the ECC. I think that was a program that was moved around many places in this town with a very vulnerable population. We found a strong, solid place for them, and I recognize that, you know, looking at that as a potential move because it's in a high school building at Ward, but I don't support moving the ECC out. But I do think that the disparity in population, it's going to continue, and whether we do this project or not, as was said here and also on our tour, in a few years, if these projections go the way they go, you're still going to be in a pinch to be able to provide the classes and the level of programming and service and instruction. So I think, and I'll give credit to a conversation I had with the previous chair of the Board of Education, that perhaps this, that could be an ongoing conversation similar to what happened with the McKinley situation, different dilemma, but that we have a middle school that has a split population, the, now it was Ludlow, now it's Woods, where kids go to two different high schools. And again, this is coming from a conversation that perhaps the Board of Education explore in the coming years, the opportunity for some of those students to opt over to Ward, recognizing that there will have to be a cap because Ward is also going to be over capacity, but I put that out there because I have found, as I've considered this project, that that disparity in population, it is an issue, and it's something that we maybe can find some other ways to address that. All that said, I think that this project needs to happen now, and it needs to continue moving. These are urgent needs for the kids who are already in the building, some of whom are not going to benefit for this, but I will also be supporting this project.
Thank you. I guess simply, I agree with both my colleagues, and I won't take time to reiterate what they've gone through. I look at this as three projects. One is for the windows and the PCBs, and I think that the number I remember is 85% of the windows being replaced, and for those of us that have been around for a while, some of those do go back to Mill Plain Elementary School. Little bit of Fairfield educational trivia, yes. Back when Tomlinson was Fairfield High. Before there was two, there was one. Before there was one, there was two. Yes.
Sounds like it.
We also have a roof project that's part of this, and we certainly have seen and explored what that meant at Fairfield-Ward High School in terms of going through that. And then we have the renovation and expansion. As was pointed out, when you look at the windows cost, the roof cost, that is the bulk of the work and what we're going through here, and part of that is the maintenance and ongoing improvements we need for the building. The other piece from a financial standpoint, again, I want to thank Dr. Title and his team, working with our CFO, and we have made major improvements in our capital planning. We keep talking about this waterfall chart, but really what it is, is the capital plan and the cash requirements and annual debt service projected out to show what we need to fund our objectives. And this, I think, is one of the first times I've, we've kind of seen the planning part of that, that we are moving some costs forward to combine in this project, but then moving some projects out, and we're doing that with planning that's not seen very often, or not given credit for being seen very often at the municipal or town level. I also think this is another sign of cooperation between the Board of Ed and the town in terms of planning what our capital needs are in doing that. So we're building the projects we need to meet the needs we are, but at the same time, minimizing the impact on our annual debt service and to some degree, being able to lower those annual debt service and consequently, give us a projection for lowering our tax increases while we're doing this. And I think the idea of adding capacity and lowering taxes is not often combined in the same sentence, let alone in the same project, so I think it takes some work to do that, and I want to thank the Board of Ed for being conscious of that. And with that being said, you know, I will be supporting this too, but I guess we should wait for the vote for that. I want to thank the Board of Ed for not only putting together the project and the plans, but also doing the rework based on the questions we asked last time, and thank you for pulling all those together on a timely basis and addressing what we needed from that standpoint. So with that as closure, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good luck, and thank you. Next item up before this board, tax collector refunds. May I have a motion to accept the refunds?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you both.